As you well have noticed, Michael Jean is absent with notice. And the next on the agenda, Mrs. Brenda Curry. And having Michael absent, the Board has reviewed your list of your questions. And we believe that as these involve Chairman Jean, it should be most appropriate to delay any discussion on these topics until Chairman Jean returns.
Do you have the items that I requested?
I do. So when Michael Jean comes back, then we'll address them.
Discuss it. But I mean, do you have the job descriptions and whatnot that I can have?
We'll discuss that when Michael Jean comes back.
So those aren't available?
At this time, we will discuss them when Michael Jean comes back. But Chairman, it's all right.
I know. My questions, we can discuss, but I'm just asking, are the documents available tonight?
I will discuss the...
I think it's just a yes or no on that part.
No, and I'm telling you that I will discuss that when Michael Jean gets back. He's the one that spearheaded that whole thing, and what he has, we need, and even our bill.
What is it that he spearheaded?
Like I said. So, that being said, we're going to move on to the ballot box machine, Mr. Jim Bond.
Can I just say something before you do? You know, you guys have had a week, and you were given notice that Mike wasn't going to be here. I think that it would have been nice if someone would have called me and let me know that as a courtesy. Because apparently you knew ahead of time that he wasn't going to be here.
That is accurate, and we just found out very recently that he wasn't going to be here. So, okay.
I guess we'll have to be. We'll still probably put them down.
This past election day, I had an issue with the ballot box that I didn't address. I understand that one ballot box is old. I don't know how old one was, but it was old. There were three ballots, and in order to put the ballots into the ballot box, you had to take them out of the privacy folder and feed them one at a time. Well, that exposes the ballot, it takes away some of the privacy. And the issue that I had was very simply this, when I stepped up to the ballot box, the person who's overseeing the ballot box on behalf of the town advised the person in front of me, the voter in front of me, that he had to take the ballots out one at a time and put them in the machine. As he did so, the person who was overseeing the ballot box was doing this, hearing at the ballot. Well, then that compromises the integrity of the process. So I would like to hope that before the next election, something can be changed, maybe repair that ballot box, or if they have to be submitted one at a time, then when a voter comes to vote, that voter needs to be given one privacy folder for each ballot, so that the ballots can be inserted in the privacy folder, not have to take them out so that someone can stand there and try to look at the ballot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Move on to select board items. Mr. Sissy, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I think there is a doubt. I don't have a clear idea. It's been two months and a week since I've asked about this. It's unfortunate that this person heard of it because I do oversee the election every time. And I didn't hear anything, or anything related to that, to that particular day of the last election.
I've got four or five people.
It's my turn.
Yeah.
Now, as I say, all that, oh, see the ballot there, all that, the selectmen there. Now, I'm just saving my attention, and that's why I'm here. One, two, there is a way of taking two ballots, keeping them in one folder, and placing them in one time. I'm not going to go through the mechanics to put on a slide and light, that's another point. Three, it's not an old machine. Basically, the best they got, I'd say, it's the best they got in the past. Four, I wish I could, and I wish that the computer mirroring machine could inspect that now. Because at the end of the night, and a lot of folks here have worked the election, we are here sometimes between one and two in the morning, correct, and huge in cities that our citizens have made out about. The state says ninety-five hour, the state says over, over time, on each one of them. I really wish I could inspect every ballot. I assure you that nobody is trying to commission a tentative of the election. And I think that that is also clearly a risk, especially this year, when we had recount, and there's two issues. And out of the normal one thousand votes that were cast, we're off by one on one of the election. And we hit it right at the nose of God. So as far as the tendency and so forth, I think that's been applied. I've been doing this for eleven years now. I'm tired of being good at it. The Attorney General's office, in fact, and they're a bit of a claim, the March election was here. They were here, their councils, to inspect what we do, really stick how we set up, the intent, and how we count individuals and the not. Not only in the past, we've had one in the last, not one. And by the way, there are hotlines that the President, I'll tell you something, we did have a contact. We did have a contact. An individual made a complaint, it was in forty-five minutes or so, meaning that the State Secretary had to turn out to the former, called the Attorney General's office, the individual involved, who wanted to get sick while the election, and had individual attention spent for that improvement. He actually saw his issue, he was wrong, we were able to prove it through the documentation. And we said, well, but, you know, I have to say, not only did I take great pride in the election, but we can, I think that the citizens of the state get tremendous shame, how badly fucked as the local government is. And you come around and see what goes on every night, believing that I could have stepped out from the election and correct, from all of that election, if we save any, on three hours, all right? I can just tell you that nobody's trying to look to vote. I pride myself on having a great memory, I gotta tell you something, okay? Especially if you lose the ballot, there's no way you're going to remember anybody or anybody to vote. And I have to tell you that there is a specific complaint, a specific individual working in our election system, I want to know about it, because I didn't know that. Now, as far as, as far as secretizing the ballots are concerned, it ranges from the entire scale. Some people hand the ballots to the person at the machine because they don't want to be dealing with it, because it jams the machine, okay? They don't want to involve them. Some people now in the state, in the ACLU, buy a suit, take their cameras out, and take pictures of their ballot, and send them on Facebook around the world, okay? All right, now that's one extreme. The other extreme is people that want extreme, extreme privacy. You guys are going, I understand that, but there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, that's a good thing, it's good to marry that, all right? But I have to tell you, I have to assure you that nobody is trying to, remember I voted on here, nobody quite frankly cares about it, and nobody would ever be able to do it. I mean, card counting is one thing, card counting on a thousand dollars is not a thing all together. So I just want to assure you that we, wherever we can, run straight elections, and the numbers, and the recounts, and the history has proven that that's bad enough to do. But if you have a complaint, I want to bring those to our attention, to do more things, and we have experienced that, and we will continue to do this.
Can I respond?
Yes. I will speak to you in private.
Of course.
Because there's no way that I want to identify the individual in public. At the time that I voted, Mark, you weren't here. You weren't in this room. Maybe you were downstairs, maybe you were taking a break, I don't know. I can only relate what happened. And I found out later that several people agreed with me and said they had had a similar experience. So, you know, do I think that there's some pokey-pokey going on? No, no. But I didn't like, I didn't like the response that I got. I'll tell you that. And that really troubled me. But I'll, I'll speak with you about that in private.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, because I don't want to embarrass the individual.
I don't want to do either, and I've never, I haven't heard any other individuals.
Okay, do you want to talk now, or?
No, I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you setting a precedent now that people who aren't on the agenda can speak about somebody that is on the agenda?
I let him address that because he's down long way.
But he didn't have to be on the agenda, so...
Okay.
Do you just put that, my question, into your minutes? If they're setting a precedent as to people being allowed to speak that aren't on the agenda?
Select board items. We received a request from Gilmoreton resident Dawn Marino. Town administrator has sent your request, leaving those to the town attorney in order. The attorney can review and redact any items that are considered confidential under the client attorney privilege. As soon as we get back, we shall forward these to you. On your second request, there is, as you're aware, there is no running ballots to the undesigned and fund ballots, as this is a calculation that is performed at the end of each year. As soon as we get a figure from Ball Thirty-One, Two Thousand Fifteen, we shall pass that along to you. Move on to public comments. Mr. Hahn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And good afternoon, sun's not shining again. Your house, the North Road, passing through. Make sure I get the right color to see that. I was in the office this afternoon, I filled out a form. And I know it was after the twelve o'clock deadline of last Thursday, but it has to deal with what I was here for before, on the unconstitutional statewide property tax. And I just wanted to give you a progress report of my lawsuit, I also have a place in Boston. My lawsuit with Garmatt County Superior Court is still sitting there, and the judge is looking at it, and is going to determine whether to grant me an injunction against the town for even sending me the bill for that, and even further up the line of preventing the selectmen from tax, from sending their tax warrant over to the town tax collector. And the deadline has come up, and I talked to Deb the other day, Deborah here, is that she says that the bills are going out the end of next week. So I presume the end of this week is when you send your tax warrant over to her to bill and collect. But before you do that, I'd like to have you do one thing, please, like what I asked of the previous selectman, is not to write a letter to the executive counselor, Colin Dean Osterman, because that's a waste of time. He, he never gets back to me, and he never gets back to you, I mean, the former selectman. So here's the thing, is in my lawsuit, I cited the Londonderry case of two thousand six, goes over to two thousand eight, is the update to that. And they, the Supreme Court judges said that the legislature, as long as they have the Oversight Committee going to, to, to look into this, the accountability issue, there are four criteria in that decision. As long as that was going on, then they would not do anything in the Supreme Court, appoint a receiver or something like that. So what I would like you to do is contact one or all three of the legislators in this district, of these two districts, and ask them if they could please ask the House Speaker, point blank, do you admit that there is no more Oversight Committee? And then you get that letter, and then you compare it with the decision of the judges. That, that's proof, right there, that the legislature, the general court is in contempt of the Supreme Court. So for you all to send over that tax warrant, knowing that it's unconstitutional, is a violation of your oath of office. I hope that doesn't come to that, that you, you know, have this... I'll try to do it myself, the last time I was down in Concord, I was down near the door of the House Speaker, and asking if he would put that in writing. But I mean, me as a citizen, I go in there and I ask all sorts of stuff, and they say, get lost, I'm going to take a hike. And you guys have more authority to write some, some letter like that. If you could, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you, I would.
Putting it on the slate? Hi, everybody. My name is Darlene Breton, and I live on the corner of Seven Allen and M. Road, and one fourth here in Gilmoreton. My husband ran that. And I came today, I don't know how all this works, I haven't had a formal complaint, it throws downstairs, got me well. I'm concerned about the salt and sand on the roads that we have, and how much is being dumped, especially particularly on my corner. Not just because it's a landscaping issue and a total nuisance, but also it's killing the tree line. And I think it's really kind of hazardous, and it's getting out of control. So I just want to put that on the public notes, and then if I need to file a complaint or do some more research, or however we follow up with this, I just think it's really important. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Hahn.
I guess I would like an explanation to the people here why the Gilmoreton Board of Selectmen no longer will audio tape their meetings. It seems to me that you guys took an oath of office to represent the taxpayers of the town of Gilmoreton. And when you guys meet, that's our business. If you want to bash people, if you want to bash employees, if you want to bash private citizens, then go over to the Gilmoreton Wine Room Monday night, have a talk, and do what they have, and get out of this office.
There you are.
No, I don't want to.
No, 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 no.
I got a little...
You're not, you're not going to bash anybody here on this board.
Listen, I have a right to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a right to speak.
But there's no personal attacks.
Listen, listen, if you want that seat, then you need to listen. I took the personal attack when I was in that seat, and if you want to sit in that seat, you're going to have to take them. Because they're well deserved by you. And that's a fact. So I want to know why you can't conduct yourself in a manner where you're not embarrassed to let the townspeople know what business you're conducting that they are paying for. That's what I want to know. Are you going to answer, or are you going to say, no comment, like every other thing you guys talk about?
Give me no comment, this is a, not a conversation, what you have to say, and we listen.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a shame that you guys have put yourself in this position where the townspeople who rep, who you are supposed to represent, whether we voted for you and sitting here or not, you're supposed to represent everybody here. And if you can't do that, you guys really should think about a different occupation.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I have a question about what tax support is planned in, and when you plan on doing as far as financial support for townspeople, as to how you're going to adjust budget, and how you're going to adjust governance?
Keep talking. How, how, are you going to, if you have any plans, are you doing financial support for the town? This isn't a question and answer, this is your chance to say what's on your mind and have the Board of Selectmen listen to it. So how do we get a question answered if you can get on the agenda? Carter?
Just because they shut me down on asking about the audio tape, I hope that everybody that's here about that will at least stand up and be heard. If you'd like them to record audio minutes again.
Mrs. Curry, you're addressed the Board, please.
You can hear me, Steve.
You address me, you don't address those people.
And when I address you, Steve, you don't answer. You know, you sit down and do this.
You just address me, please, you don't address the people in the hall.
I would like to pass along, if you would, to the audience, to please be heard if they would like you to continue audio tape. You said that I couldn't speak even though I was on the agenda, because you don't have...
Due to, except in different circumstances.
Because you don't have a full board. However, you didn't have a full board last week, when the two of you felt it was an important enough time to take away the arguments. You two voted, but you two aren't qualified to answer my questions as to why, when it was you two that voted and not us two. He wasn't here. He didn't have a say in taking them away, you did. And that was my first question. So I don't understand why you two can't answer it.
They're getting tabled. So Michael Jean is back.
And also, if you would relay this to Heather, some of the attachments on the minutes, even though they stay in the transcribe minutes, they're not attached. If you could please do that.
So I guess that one, our location within the minutes were one. And I got the job initially for Budget Committee, trustees, and then when I was training for the BOS, basically, I was told the attachments don't go online or at the post offices, but with the original copy. And I think that was just a personal preference by the person training. I was unaware of it, so the documents that you did have were in the original book, but I'll rectify that now without verification, so I can pop it online and add it to the minutes that are pending.
Okay. So Steve, addresser here, when will I be on the agenda again? Next meeting?
I don't want to have an answer to that right now.
Can I be on the agenda, Paul? And then if Michael's not here again, you can defer me again? Somebody needs to give me an answer if I can be on the agenda.
We don't have any answers right now.
Are you kidding? Are you kidding?
We don't know when Michael Jean is coming back, we don't know.
But put I be on there so I don't miss the deadline?
Apply every time, and then you'll be notified if he is going to be here or not.
Seriously?
Yes.
This is what we have, people.
Somebody else?
You're next, Miss Dwyer.
Yes.
I just want to say that my husband and I have been to selectmen's meetings for years. Due to illness, I have not been able to come. Over the years, what the selectmen have always done, and I think that's what's one of some of the confusion that we're facing tonight, is, yeah, that the public input is what it is. Someone will stand up and say, I have an interest in, like Mr. Baker has just did, in this information. And the response has always been, on most occasions, has always been, okay, I'll write that down, and we'll get back to you, if you come back to next meeting, or something like that, rather than, thank you for your input. And it's, I don't know that you mean to do this, but it sounds offensive. I think that people come here at their supper hour in order to express what they're thinking, feeling, whatever, in the hopes that you'll hear them, and that eventually, at some point, even if you're not informed or, or whatever, that at some point you'll at least look into it, or say, I look into it, or at least write it down, and it will go, bounce off a little. That's it.
So Dwyer?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm just curious, you've stopped, do you want me to stand up?
He wants you to speak to him.
I was, wasn't I?
Oh, you were there.
Oh, Sandy Guarino. I was just wondering, I know that you're not recording anymore, correct? There's no more recordings by the, any a town official? Nobody in the town, as a town official, is recording for you to use for your minutes? Is Deb Cornet on that? Is she part of the town? I'm just curious, because she's recording. I know you're not answering, Steve. But I just want it known that I know she's recording, so I'm wondering if you're going to use the, the tape to help you. You're not using it?
It's not my case. If I, if I was allowed to, an audio, it would be useful. I won't even do it. What I'm putting in the minute will be what I heard personally.
And I'm just, I'm, I can't even believe there's no recording. You guys are supposed to be transparent, yet you're about as transparent as a rubber mat. And you continue to be so. You have to answer to us as taxpayers, yet you both sit up there and you're quiet. And you won't answer us. Now, all these people want answers. We're a little upset, I would say, that there's no recording. After how many times was it said, we want to save these recordings for seven years? How do you do that? How do you go from seven years to nothing? No answer? How, how are you even a selectman? Steve? You're not answering to the townspeople, you're not answering to the taxpayers. You're just sitting up there saying nothing. How long do you think that's going to last? I'm done.
For your input?
You're welcome.
Okay, Barbara Swanson. I tend to agree, I think that the meetings should be recorded. I was part of committee a couple of years ago, and I was speaking minutes, we did not have recorded. And I took all the detailed minutes that someone told me later. You don't need to be so specific. And I'm afraid that from my experience, because it, minutes can take, if you're not a short-term expert, and you don't put every single word in, it's going to be whitewashed. And so I am concerned that perhaps not every voice will be heard. And I think they should be heard, yours, I'm not. With regard, I have not listened to this infamous non-public tape. But my reaction to what I heard about it is that, again, someone said, we, the townspeople elected you and Michael Jean to represent us. And I, as a citizen, expect whoever represents me to be held to a certain level of respectability, accountability, transparency. Your conduct should be not an embarrassment to you or to the town. So if you can do that, like tonight, you're not kidding, Andy. I'm a little annoyed, I guess, myself, that you're not responsive at all, but I understand perhaps some of that, but... But you were right, so that's all I just wanna say about that. And I have something else to bring up, which is not this, if I could.
Sure.
I just wanted to know if anything has been done about the bio-sol committee?
I, uh... Can I speak about that? Uh, I... You know... Why are you wearing that guy? You wouldn't wear it to... Um... I saw it out. I had to go back to the song, oh. Anybody else?
John Martin. You... You stay set there, and you stonewall, and you keep it up. And you keep it up, and I'll tell you what, it's gonna bite you. And you don't have to thank me for my comment. You don't have to say word one. But you just keep it up. 'Cause you're gonna have...
You're out of line, Mr. Martin.
Maybe, that maybe. What are you gonna do about it? You're not gonna do anything about it.
Hand back.
I guess we can see that.
I'd like to say something. First of all, I know you've gone through this election. And I think that the expectation for selection is very high. You're only gonna have this for two months. And I know a few people that have done selection before, and when they stepped into your office, they didn't know anything either. And they acted just like you are right now. They didn't have anything to say. They were pretty much adverse to taking any audio or video when I asked to. And that was a few years back. So don't feel offended that you feel like you don't want this publicized right now. I understand. You're like walking in your shoes, trying to get your way. They don't give you a plastic tape and say, "This is what you gotta do to be a selectman." It's a big job. You have all these people, and they're always butting heads against each other, always. There's always two sides, and you have to find the middle ground to make it work for the town of Gilmoreton, which is very hard to do. Okay? You always feel like you're going one step forward and five steps back. I work for the town, I know. And these people here that feel like they just wanna tear you down instead of helping you to do your job, 'cause they've been in your shoes before, are being really low. Because they have somebody help them through their position. That's why they can stand here looking down on me right now. So I think they should step up and start helping, instead of start tearing you down. If they want something done in town, they should make help out. And I don't mean with money, I mean help out. Figure out how to make a way for Gilmoreton. All the towns around here don't have issues like we do at selectmen meetings. They really don't. They actually get things done. They're not petty. There are a lot of things that are hidden. And if you wanna start digging dirt and slinging it, there's gonna be a whole bucket and a big farm truck coming up. 'Cause I'm telling you right now, past election have done the same thing. And we can... It's public minutes. You can dig 'em out, you can ask for 'em. It's record. If we wanna go there, I don't think we do. 'Cause we have many more things to accomplish in Gilmoreton that we shouldn't start throwing names out and tearing down a selectman that we elected. Maybe not you, but the town elected them. So they saw something in these men. What did they see? Maybe you should put your glasses on and look at them, and say, "How can we help them?" Instead of making our town look like a laughingstock to the rest of the community. 'Cause seriously, these are good men. One?
Thank you.
Okay. Been a selectman for a long time in this town, and I can't even recall a time where it wasn't recorded, or it wasn't on MetroCast. And until the agreement with MetroCast wasn't renewed over the price that that cost to the taxpayers, which was about $5,000 a year, and we calculated it was over $100 per broadcast of a selectmen's meeting, all those selectmen's meetings were broadcast, and all the selectmen meetings that I know of were actually recorded. So I cannot remember a time that a selectmen's meeting wasn't recorded and available to the public. If somebody wants to spend a lot of time trying to research it, then they can go ahead. I know that the tapes, because they used to get taped over after they were transferred and made available to the public. You could've requested a tape. Anybody could've requested a tape when they were being recorded as a tape. Then, once they were approved by the Board of Selectmen, then they were taped over at the following meeting. Now, this board wanted to archive them for seven years. And then all of a sudden, last meeting, they said, "No more audio." And in fact, this board actually spoke about having an agreement with MetroCast. So the individual that's in the audience that says that these weren't recorded and that they weren't actually broadcast can spend time researching them.
Um, yeah, that actually reminded me of a thing I recall from the time when Mrs. Stephanie Bob related to many things that I was interested in many years ago. And I was told that it was recorded over pretty much a week after it was actually done. So there was no audio. And I could tell you, because I requested public minutes, copies of them, which are public, pull them out, and they were so vague, and so... They had a subject matter and the people that were there, that even if I wanted to listen to it, I couldn't listen to it, because it was over like that. The next week, it was taped over. So if I delayed in any sort, it was not available. So when you say that they're recorded, and I can go look at them at any time, it's not true, Don. It is not true. I tried, I requested Stephanie many times, and I was never given anything. And the only thing I did got were minutes that were so vague, they had half the information that are in minutes now.
Okay, wait. Okay, this is... You guys talk about order, okay? And you were saying that we're not gonna go to the point that we're bashing people. Now, all I was talking about was specifically about how these meetings were recorded. Told you they were actually recorded with equipment provided by MetroCast. And I also told you that they were recorded on a tape recorder. And then, once they were approved by the Board of Selectmen, they were recorded over that recording. Now, I'm listening to a person in the audience that's actually bashing somebody that's not here, that's a bit... That can say anything about it, and you're actually letting this happen?
The ordinance reads that it's an Republican's official's item.
Oh, well, then let me back... I'm gonna bash somebody back. Uh, well, go ahead. This is bashing time.
I'm just responding to that. One minute ago, you know, it wasn't audios, and now it is audios that Kristen wants. You can't have it both ways. You can't look back if there aren't any. And according to Right to Know, recording over them was wrong, because any audios that you currently have from your past meetings, they need to be kept for a certain amount of time. And you guys have been attending the Right to Know seminars, the two of them, I believe, within the last month. You will know how long you need to keep them. So they should not be destroyed. And I do think it's pretty sad that you sat there like a mute when you're asked questions, but you allow someone from the audience to bash an employee of the town. When you were just saying, "We're not gonna sit here and be bashed by Brett, bashed by Glenn," but you're letting somebody from the general public bash an employee that's not here. So you wanna sit and be a mute when it serves you, but you don't when they're bashing somebody that you booted with your clean slate?
Thank you for your input.
And that's funny, Steve? A little chuckle? Not funny?
I would just like to encourage the board to keep recording the minutes. It's a great help for most of the community. Me, I... In the winter, I don't drive, and I can't attend a meeting. Lots of times, just because of health, I can't attend a meeting. But to have them recorded available, and to have them streamlined, was such a great... To me, was a great advantage. It just... I think there are a lot of the... More than people deny, that would really, really would like to have this seriously considered. It's in the best interest of the community to keep them informed what's going on. It's a great way for them knowing what's going on. And I really appreciate your reconsidering your vote.
Anybody else? Vaughn?
I also think you should continue to record the minutes. It's good. It's more accurate than a written interpretation of minutes, because it allows the person who's recording to stop the machine, go back, and make sure that what's being recorded is accurate. And it's simply good for your credibility.
Thank you. Vaughn?
Um, just a second. I think we should continue recording meetings. Um, I think we have to be more accountable to the townspeople. And as they said, you're a home court there.
Thank you.
I would also support the early on continued, because... Unless I'm missing something, it's pretty obvious the reason you're wanting to stop it. And I think it's better for everyone to be more transparent about things. Maybe say, "Whatever happened, happened, move on." But we really need to have the ability to go online, listen to them, or however we want to. And if it's only fair, we did put you in office to give us what we request.
Thank you. Mrs. Swanson?
Leonard Swanson. And I'd like to add my voice to the ones that would like to see the minutes be recorded and kept, so that we can look at them in a later time.
Thanks. Debbie Vaughn?
Deborah Cornet. I would also like to continue to see the minutes recorded. And I hear a gentleman said that one of our residents wanted to see that in some form of video, which I brought a couple of companies forward that do that, and they set up cameras in your meeting room, and they record them, and then they streamline them, right from your website, and after that, to a video. I still think that's an excellent idea, because none of each of ours accountable, and any call board, I think, would ever present calls up.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I agree. Um, just wanted to kind of comment that I think, I agree with this all. I think, and I understand, you know, I said on the school board, I understand all the comments must be about a question, and it's period. But this part because of that balancing act, completely, well, I get it. You know, this is as far as this could come, period. The challenge is that the people in the government, that's kinda how they give information. So it's that balancing act. People show up at the school board, they don't ask a question. We acknowledge them. I get it, it's frustrating, we shouldn't. Probably from a legal standpoint, Mark disagrees. But bottom line, that's... That's giving process. So I think, same with the recording. I mean, the recording has been something you guys have been doing. Keep doing it. Don't stop because of the knee-jerk reaction, in my opinion. I think that's what's just happened as a result of mistakes in the interest of Kristen's. Pete, you're new. You're going to be mistaken. You're gonna say things you shouldn't say, that you should not comment publicly, or on public, or whatever. But don't... But Mark, and you know, but don't necessarily just stop the recording. I think it puts Heather at disadvantage, it's all people accountable at this advantage. We only not record that, transcribe this. Think about the libraries, how that is divided, how it was all said. You don't think we've gotta get first of that? In terms of, you know, you think, you know, trying to capture the essence of what was said, versus what was actually said? Would not be able to perpetuate further risk, how it becomes needed more, you know? More, a couple of bad, worse talks to...
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sure this has been decided to deal with some money a while ago. You could've walked back and used the number that somebody...
Thank you. There's some there.
Uh, Kurt Stewart. I agree that we should have full disclosure. And obviously, there seem to be two sides to this. And obviously, personalities come into it. And that's where everything goes down the drain, and personalities come into it. Everybody's just a little too stubborn. But, okay. That's that, so... Now, I... The second subject, I'll bring out when I let it cheap here. The flags go up on our telephone pole approximately Memorial Day. I believe that's right. What I would ask is, yes, I would like to see them up for Memorial Day. But I'd like them to stay through Veterans Day. They always come down before Veterans Day, and I think that's sort of a slap in the face. It's only a few more weeks. I mean, I think taking, uh, Halloween, somewhere...
Yeah, typical day.
Yeah, so take it, go, one more week, that's... That's a say it off. You know, that makes sense, right? Memorial Day would be better. Okay, well, that's my... No, the other... That was another technical, the Department of... What was it, a voicemail or a... So, you know, we were really in a direction of, but we were having to do that next thing.
That was... I see.
Yeah.
There are a lot, by the way.
Chase, start. Thank you. Anybody else?
Cheryl Barnes. Just walking in tonight, I noticed dead things in containers outside the step, and just making a recommendation that somebody changes that out. The dead furs and stuff that looked like they were from Christmas time. Oh, and I want the audio to continue. Put my voice in that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna close public comments. We're gonna go into non-public and adjourned right after the non-public. Will I make a motion to go into non-public? RSA nine one eight, code three, home number two, emergency C.
A second, Evan.